All right, we are live.
Okay. I'm just gonna wait a minute to let people file in. All right. Let's get started. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Annual notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 6th, 2021. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was faxed to the Home News Tribune and emailed to the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on June 17th, 2021, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpboro.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall to 21 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey on June 17th, 2021, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. As Mayor, I preside over the council meeting and I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or participation in the virtual meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comment or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Today, I'd like to ask Council President Phil George to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Mayor Beryl Mittler?
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster?
Here.
Councilman George?
Here.
Councilman Hale?
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yeah.
Or Attorney Schmier?
Here.
Or Administrator Hovair?
Here.
All right, does anyone on the council have any questions on agenda items? No? Okay. We're going to move on to the approval. Are there any minutes to be approved tonight? I don't believe so.
No.
Okay. All right, then we'll go right into our council reports. I'm going to start with Councilwoman Tara Canavera.
Before I give my report, I'd like to give thanks to the Highland Park First Aid Squad and Officer O'Lara. A few weeks ago, I had to call 911. Officer O'Lara was the first to arrive and was extremely professional but also compassionate. Once the first aid squad arrived, they did a great job in caring for my uncle. While I was busy with the first aid squad, Officer O'Lara was spending that time speaking with my 12-year-old who was scared and worried. Officer O'Lara helped calm my son to the point that my son was able to relax and worry less. My son was the one that asked me that I call the chief and, in my son's words, tell the chief how great Officer O'Lara is. So, thank you to Officer O'Lara and our first aid squad for being there when my family needed them. June is National Men's Health Month. It's important to encourage the men in our lives to get regular checkups and be aware of the risks for their age, ethnicity, and lifestyle. The Human Relations Commission had their, the Pride, I'm sorry, in connection with the Pride Center, had the Pride Flag raising today. Also, tomorrow will be their meeting. You can find the link on the Borough website. The Board of Health had, I'm sorry, heard tick season is bad this year. Please see their link on the Borough website to tips on how to deal with mosquitoes and ticks. There also will be passing out repellent at the fireworks. The Housing Authority, again, would like to remind residents of the Middlesex County Emergency Rental Assistance Program. You can learn more about this program by visiting middlesexcountynj.gov/rentalassistance. And as we all know, even though more people are returning to work, food insecurity is still high. We have the Food Pantry, which is open the second and fourth Thursday, 9:00 AM to 10:45 PM and 6:00 PM to 7:00, and also the Saturday following the Thursday, 9:30 to 10:30. Donations can be made using their Amazon wishlist. Highland Park Gives a Hoot Food Pantry is every Tuesday from 10:00 AM until 11:00 AM, and donations can be made by making a check to Borough Hall with a memo that it's for the Highland Park Gives a Hoot. Both these programs so far are serving over 300 families still in our community. The Mental Health Commission wants everybody to remember that if you are in a mental health crisis, please reach out for help. The Middlesex County Crisis Hotlines is Rutgers University Behavioral Healthcare Hotline, 855-515-5700, and Raritan Bay Medical Center Hotline is 732-442-3794. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Hale, do you have a report today?
And do, Mayor. I wanted to start by saying I went to the Pride Flag raising today. It was very inspiring, as it always is, and so I wanted to thank everybody, Tara and Human Relations Commission, the Pride Center, for being involved in that. It's just a nice and important thing, I think, for the community to do, to recognize during this month the importance of the community to Highland Park. So, I wanted to say thanks for that. I also wanted to say thank you, and I'm gonna share my screen for a second, if that's possible. One of our newest officers in Highland Park, Caitlin Dean, has took it upon herself to create and start a program in Highland Park, working with Main Street Highland Park, to create a Safe Place HP. And the idea is that this sticker that is up there, that you see, is available to anyone who would like to put it on their house, put it on their business, put it someplace so that if, God forbid, someone is facing harassment or facing bullying or facing any situation where they're nervous, that they can see from afar a safe place where they can go. Our newest officer, one of our newest officers, again, Caitlin Dean is the one who sort of started this. She's working with Main Street, and she's also going door-to-door on her own, you know, to bring this. I think it's a great program, and I encourage everybody who can, who has the ability to put up a decal like this, to know that this is something that could really help someone in a crisis situation, to know that if they go in here, that the police will be called, and it'll be a safe place for anyone who's a victim of a hate crime or harassment. So, I think it's a great program, and I'm very happy that the police have been putting this. And Main Street has also been very supportive of this, and I think our businesses as well. So, this is a great program. So, just look for that sign and please encourage people to put it out there. I wanted to just really briefly talk about the Downtown Redevelopment Plan. As many of you know, we've had numerous meetings, including planning board meetings from last week, and we've got a lot of great comments, a lot of great momentum, a lot of great ideas. Our original plan was to introduce a resolution on it today. I think we're gonna hold off on that, based on some comments that we have from the planning board and the rest of the community, to make sure that we've incorporated all the various aspects and ideas into a redevelopment plan. So, on June 22nd, we have a regularly scheduled redevelopment entity meeting, and we'll go into more detail at that meeting about where we are in the plan and the specific changes and things that are going on within the redevelopment plan. Again, I think that we're moving forward and in a good way. I think that we are, I think, I hope, I know that we're listening to the public's concerns on a lot of different issues, and I'm excited that we are moving forward. So, again, on June 22nd is a redevelopment entity meeting. So, I certainly hope that at that point, we'll go through the whole process, we'll go through the whole plan, step by step, and take the time necessary to make sure that we get this right. So, next, Elsie's gonna talk about this a little bit further, I believe. We're probably gonna end up tabling our scooter initiative tonight, not because we don't love scooters. I just want everybody to know that we actually love scooters. We just wanna make sure we're getting it right in terms of compliance with state law. I'll let Elsie, since it's in public safety, talk about that, but when that comes up, I wanted people to know. And then, lastly, I wanted to wish everybody out there a happy Flag Day, which was June 14th, and then also to celebrate a happy Juneteenth, which is June 19th. That's a nice way to bookend a week, to have a way of looking back and ideally of looking forward, too. So, happy Flag Day and also happy Juneteenth to everybody as it comes up. That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hirsch, do you have a report? You have to unmute yourself.
I do, I do. Sorry, I was finding the mute button. Thank you, Mayor, and hello, everyone. My name is Matthew Hirsch. I chair the council's Arts and Rec Committee, and just a little bit about what's going on in my portfolio. Fireworks in the park, as we've reported, but now with a little more detail. Highland Park, in conjunction with the City of New Brunswick, will host its annual Independence Day fireworks, which is very exciting, on July 1st, Thursday, July 1st, with a rain date of Monday, July 5th. The park will open at 6:00 PM and fireworks will launch at approximately 9:20 PM after sundown. This year, we, you know, because of the level of planning that goes into it, and because we didn't really know where we would be come July, it'll be a little bit pared down. There will be pre-recorded music, so you are encouraged to show up a little bit early with a blanket, have a picnic, and we will look forward to resuming live music entertainment at this event in 2022. However, we will have a wide variety of food vendors who will be setting up shop around 6 o'clock, so please come down to enjoy dinner and refreshments and all those wonderful light-up toys, if you have kids, which are always fun, but then kind of end up in your, you know, end up in the pile at home. And we're also really happy to announce that we have a, we're working with Congressman Frank Pallone's office. We're happy to announce that we have a vaccination clinic on site that day between the hours of 6:00 PM and 9:00 PM, and this will be the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. For those wishing to be vaccinated, please get vaccinated. If you haven't, it is so easy, and I think that we're seeing the benefits of it, but obviously, there's still a lot of work to be done when it comes to getting vaccinated. 2021 Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program. This is for ages, for residents aged 60 and up. The Office of Aging is currently in the process of accepting applications for residents meeting the necessary criteria and income requirements to receive vouchers for the farmer's market. This year, each eligible older adult will receive $5, $6 vouchers for a total of $30. All eligible, all those eligible, all eligible couples, I'm sorry, will receive $30 for a total of $60 per couple. Please contact the Community Services Department at 732-819-0052 to make an appointment, and you must show proof of residence and bring an ID to your appointment. Only 100 vouchers will be available, so please reach out. Outdoor summer programming for seniors. The Office of Aging has announced that we'll be resuming small outdoor activities and programs that are, to be held under its recently installed retractable awning on the side of the community center, as well as in the parking lot, weather permitting. Please stay tuned for updates and more information pertaining to in-person programming. Please stop by or reach out to the community center for summer schedule and to learn more. Registration is currently open for three summer camps, day camp, sports camp, and theater camp. The recreation summer season is underway, and we have three summer camps that will be running at Donaldson Park. The day camp will run from July 5th through August 13th, and this is a staple, obviously, in our Highland Park community, and they managed to do an incredible job last year, also operating it under a tent. Camp, their camp offers music, arts, and crafts, recreation, science, and nature activities that keep campers happy and engaged. We'll have our sports camp featuring coaching experts in the field, and this year, we will present football, speed and agility, soccer, tennis, basketball, volleyball, track, and baseball. Last but not least, we have our musical theater camp that will run Moana Jr., and I believe we are going to be approving a resolution tonight, giving that one the green light. Our camp counselors are the backbone of our summer camp and consist of local teachers, as well as past campers, returning college students and high school students. And, you know, the Rec Department's really lucky to have a strong connection to the community, and it shows, I think, with, you know, with the turnout and the folks who come back to serve in these new roles. So, find out more at highlandparknj.myrec.com. Councilman Hale just mentioned Juneteenth, and I just wanted to say that, you know, so Borough offices are closed in observance of Juneteenth, which is Saturday, but Borough offices are closed on Friday. But this Thursday, June 17th, at 3:00 PM at Monument Square in front of New Brunswick's Performing Arts Center, a number of community groups have come together, including Highland Parkers, have come together to create this year's celebration in conjunction with the unveiling of the Community Juneteenth Street Chalk mural at the intersection of George Street, Liberty Street, and Livingston Avenue, that the Arts Institute of Middlesex County, the New Brunswick Performing Arts Center, and the New Brunswick Cultural Center. Interested members are invited to come out and participate in the creation of the chalk art mural under the direction of artist Luis Miguel Caraballo on Wednesday, excuse me, on Wednesday, June 16th and Thursday, June 17th. The Thursday, Juneteenth program will open with remarks by Professor Bill Davis, followed by performances, including dance, a collaborative oration by New Brunswick High School senior Ayanna Slekum, and New Brunswick Health and Sciences High School teacher, and a New Brunswick Health and Sciences High School teacher, I'm sorry, and a tribute presentation by soprano and Highland Park resident, Dr. Sonia Headlam of Lift Every Voice and Sing. We've heard her perform this at the Martin Luther King Observance, sponsored by the Human Relations Commission, and she is just magnificent. And this is in recognition of the 150th birthday of James Walden Johnson, Lift Every Voice and Sing's author. The program will culminate with the raising of the Juneteenth flag. And then, just to comment, you know, tonight, we're gonna vote on a resolution in support of a bill in the legislature, Assembly Bill 4656, Senate Bill 2963, that's the companion bill in the Senate, and this would authorize towns to create local civilian review boards to review police operations and conduct. This bill and this resolution is deeply important, and it provides for increased oversight, accountability, and transparency that I feel will positively benefit the community and law enforcement. You might remember, for those tuning in, on June 1st, at our last meeting, we heard from the bill's prime sponsor in the Assembly, Assemblywoman Angela McKnight, and she's terrific and is really motivated to get this through, and I think that, you know, with the, you know, with the Borough's support and with towns around New Jersey's support, this is the kind of advocacy that local governments can take in order to move important legislation like this. This bill would authorize municipalities and counties to establish civilian review boards and review police operations and conduct. A civilian review board would review and investigate law enforcement complaints and make related policy recommendations, and it would consist of at least seven members who are appointed by the mayor and council. There's more to this bill that you can read more about in the resolution, but this is a real and major step toward true police reform. Our police officers play a critical role in keeping our community safe, and I believe this legislation will make us even safer by working together to make positive, necessary community-based change. And I'd like to thank the advocates also, who have worked to advance this bill. And that is my, oh, and I did wanna just recognize, we lost a giant in the community this past week, Fred Cole, who served the Borough in a number of capacities, but on the Arts Commission and on the Arts Collective, passed away last week after an illness, and he was a longtime coach in Old Bridge. Unfortunately, in the last few months, he attended the commemoration of the, you know, of the playing field in Old Bridge, which is now named after Fred Cole. So, I will remember him, and we will honor his legacy by carrying on the work that he did. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Foster, do you have a report?
Unfortunately, I don't have much to report because everybody did such a fantastic job before. Matt, both Matt did. So, I don't have too much more to say. I was gonna talk about the, well, really important. This coming Thursday, 7:00 PM, is gonna be our community police forum, so 7:00, please tune in, go to your Zoom, and Zoom in to find out, ask any questions, and to get the latest update, that's what they have been working on, what's going on in our local PD. I'm gonna have the chief in a few minutes say a few words about some of the new registry legislation that is coming, that has come down, and different policies that have come down and that will change how police handle themselves, how reports are gonna be done, and how they have to report, and how people get more information when it's needed. So, the chief will be coming on in a few, but the community forum is on the 17th, this coming Thursday, at 7:00 PM. We also have a few more spaces available in our Junior Cadet Academy, which is gonna be starting July 12th to the 16th. So, if you're interested, please, there's more spots available. And everybody spoke about the flag raising this morning, spoke about Juneteenth, number of groups from all over. So, please, this coming Thursday, there is an opportunity at 2:00 PM for people to come out and help with the painting and that kind of thing of the mural. So, there's an opportunity for anyone who wishes to help with the mural down in New Brunswick and Livingston Avenue, and please come out and do so, and really make this an awesome event. I am more than thrilled and happy to see that we have finally recognized and will be celebrating Juneteenth. So, it's a big deal. It's a huge deal, not just only to recognize this one day, but to recognize all the contributions that former enslaved people made to make this country a great country. So, come out, celebrate with us, learn some of the great history and some of the greatest accomplishments that have made us the great country that we are, and that was done on free labor. But that being said, I'm gonna ask the chief, oh, e-scooter, you guys already heard that we're gonna be tabling that, that's gonna come up. We have some more work to do with e-scooters, that's gonna be tabled. But at this time, I'm gonna ask Chief Abrams to come in and to say a few words about some of the changes that are gonna be happening.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. So, the Mayor and Councilwoman Foster Dublin, or Foster, sorry, asked me to speak about a new directive that the AG's office put out. It was actually first issued in mid-June of 2020, and then it was sent, it was challenged by police departments and unions, and it went to the Supreme Court. On June 7th of this year, the Supreme Court released their findings. This policy has to do with discipline, and it is a huge shift in the way police departments have handled discipline in the past. Under this new policy, anyone who faces major discipline from the police department, major discipline is being defined as a five-day suspension or more, termination, or demotion. Any officer who is found guilty at the end of an IA and who faces discipline of that nature now has to have their names released to the public, in addition to a synopsis of what the IA was for, what the investigation found out, and how we reached our conclusions. So, this is gonna be retroactive to June of last year and going forward. So, we have until August 9th to go through everything that we have to do, find if we have any instances. Currently, we do not. From mid-June forward, we have no instances that planted there. There is the ability to go backwards up to 20 years and look at 20 years' worth of disciplinary records. The decision on how far to go back is gonna be left in the hands of each county prosecutor and all the municipalities within that county are gonna have to follow what the county prosecutor says. We are still waiting on that decision from our county prosecutor. There is a way for officers to appeal this due to labor considerations from past agreements. The state doesn't want towns to be sued for violating agreements that were made that had confidentiality as part of the disciplinary agreement. So, there is a mandatory 45-day notification and a hearing by a judge from any officer who wants to fight their name being released to the public. It's a, if you go online, you can find the actual Supreme Court decision. It's 60 pages. It's very long. It's very confusing because there's actually two different versions, one for municipal police departments and one for any department that's part of the state, so county, state corrections, state police, park police, things like that. So, there's two versions of this bill that's out there, and then the Supreme Court goes back and forth in their decision explaining the two of them. So, for now, for Highland Park, we will have to put out, starting from mid-June of last year, the name of any officer who faced major discipline. This has to start by August 9th. So, going forward, not only will we have the historical synopsis, but now the names are included. So, that's the, that's the short and the long of it without boring everybody. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Not at this time. We won't ask you questions. If the council has any questions, they will save them for later on.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you. Okay. Councilwoman Foster, are you done with your report then? Thank you. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, do you have a report?
Yes, just a few comments. I know Councilwoman Foster and Councilman Hale spoke about the e-scooters, but I was just so excited, I couldn't help myself with my comments when I saw it on the agenda, but, so I'm still gonna make them, but I'm happy to see that they're working on increasing the, from the rider's side and the pedestrian safety side. I've had an e-scooter for probably three-plus years now, and it is kind of dangerous. You do feel unsafe at times, so I'm happy to see our municipality is taking this on as scooter sharing has, it's like a growing population. Scooter sharing systems are one of the least expensive and most popular micro-mobility options. So, I know we're gonna do it right. It's gonna go through public safety, it's gonna go through economic development, it's gonna be a wonderful addition to our community once it's up and running. I'm also happy to see the resolution to support civilian review boards on the agenda. I'm gonna keep my comments later for the vote. And lastly, June is still Pride Month, but it's also Black Music Appreciation Month, the annual celebration of African-American music in the United States. It was proclaimed by President Jimmy Carter on June 7, 1979. African-American music and musicians have helped this country to dance, to express our faith through song, to march against injustice, and to defend our country's most enduring promise of freedom and opportunity for all. And that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council President Phil George, do you have a report?
Do, Mayor, just briefly. First, I wanna recognize and join in our, all of our fellow residents that are celebrating Juneteenth. It's a regular holiday at our house, usually with a barbecue celebration, and unfortunately, last year, we weren't able to gather. This year, I hope we do so, and And also to our fellow residents in the LGBTQ community, congratulations on that. Down to the nitty-gritty, we'll be opening the RFPs for the paving project for this year. The roads we have listed are South Sixth Avenue from Magnolia to Benner, South Ninth from Eden to Graham, North Ninth from Raritan to Abbott, Benner from South Seventh to South Ninth, Barnard from Woodbridge to Central, Cliff Court from South Adelaide to its end. And then the Lincoln Avenue repair to North Fifth Avenue will be doing half-wide, catching up on PSC and G's restoration work down in that area. Also, pleased to announce, thank you to the administration, Sustainable Highland Park and Terry Hovier for their work on the Clean Communities Grant. We received $26,590.52 for the Clean Communities Grant, which supposedly it labels itself as litter, but it's actually worked to water quality, stormwater runoff, as well as removal of plastics from the environment and reusable bags. So we'll put that to good use. DPW and STACK are proceeding with the planting project. As you know, we, last year, when we didn't really do too much, we switched to a zone approach so that we could concentrate planting, growing and watering in certain areas rather than be spread out across town. This year, we've targeted the triangle for the planting project. There are two more bulk trash pickups and then we'll be ceasing until September. So if you do have bulk trash and you wanna get it out now, you need to make a reservation for these last two dates on the next two Wednesdays in June. In the coming work session, we'll be reviewing, finally, the meter replacement program. Terry has been working very hard putting it together and also working with Middlesex Water on the requirement, so we'll be previewing that at one of the work sessions shortly. And finally, an interesting project in conjunction with, with Matt's Watch and Arts and Recreation. On Sunday, Meadows Trail Volunteers led members of the Art Collective and the Art Commission through the meadows to look at a bench replacement or replenishment project. And it really surprised quite a lot of people what is down there and the work that goes on. The volunteers were out with their T-shirts and proud to show everything off. The artists in the group were kind of bowled over by what's going on down there. Nature cooperated with a nice day and also a lot of species of birds were there as well. They were exploring the project, possibly even using the rustic benches that the Meadows Trail prefers, as well as some of the debris, you know, in, in that area to actually make into benches. Then they went to the Environmental Center to look at a general cleanup and also see if, as we begin to open up, it can be used. Occasionally, it's an art venue, it does need a lot of cleanup and a lot of work. It's been pretty much abandoned. I think the last time anybody was there except to check on it by DPW was our very last Environmental Commission meeting before the shutdown for the pandemic in February. And that's about it, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Just very briefly, thank you. Just another reminder, because it's a new holiday for us. This coming Friday, we will be closed for the Juneteenth holiday. So I just wanna remind everybody that, you know, the doors won't open if you come in on that day. But I'll let, leave the eloquent statements that preceded me, leave it there. I will say, double down on your tick, I pulled two off me last weekend. So I, I will firsthand confirm that what Tara mentioned. But I also wanted to mention, and I know Council President George mentioned it at the last meeting, but we've adjusted the schedule a little bit. And as you recall, we were talking about the reinstatement or the kind of, we, the lack of hiatus for bring-your-own-bag ordinance. We're gonna make that effective August 1st. There will be no plastic and also a 10-cent beyond paper bags and also an education campaign that will also get out ahead of where the state legislation that was passed and signed by the governor is to get everybody kind of thinking about that as well. We are sending out letters to the businesses to remind them. We're gonna, we gave ourselves a long ramp up so that we could get businesses enough lead time. They'll have signage they can post in their stores if they would like to, to help with the communication to the public. But I count myself in this, we all need to start retraining ourselves on bringing our own bags into the stores and, you know, get ready for that August deadline. So just wanted to remember that. And that's all I have here.
Okay, thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
All right, I do have a few things. First, as this week's COVID update, as a clear sign of the waiting threat of the COVID-19 pandemic, the county has discontinued sending out current new positive test results to municipalities. On the other hand, rates of vaccination continue to come into my office. As of June 7th, 59% of our adult population has been fully vaccinated. Another 12% have had at least one shot. So accordingly, once that 12% gets their second shot, we'll have 72% of our population completed or on the way. And we had a target goal of 70%, so good for you Highland Park. I do now receive information on the percentage of our 12- to 17-year-old population that has been vaccinated. So as of June 7th, which is the latest data I have, 47% of our children aged 12 through 17 have been fully vaccinated. And 17% of this age group has had at least one shot. Therefore, 64% of our tweens and teens through age 17 have completed or are on their way to completing their vaccinations against this pandemic. These are encouraging figures and I thank all of our residents who have made it a priority to protect themselves, their families and their neighbors by getting the COVID-19 vaccination. For those who have not yet been vaccinated, we are working to get more pop-up local vaccination sites in Highland Park. And as Councilman Hirsch mentioned, there will be a vaccine set up at, at the fireworks this year. Just so you know, we are still continuing to offer the COVID-19 testing at our community center. At this point, it's still four days and that's Mondays from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Tuesdays from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Wednesdays from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM and Fridays from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, but that may be cut back shortly. Remember that these new, the new relaxation of mask requirements outdoors is so very welcome for all of, by all of us. But we're not completely out of the woods with this pandemic yet. So I urge you to remain cautious and try to maintain some social distance. Our borough buildings and some private businesses in town still require face masks and social distancing. And I urge you all to please respect those individual decisions. Our businesses and restaurants are experiencing a welcome return, so please patronize them. Several of the council members mentioned the Resolution 4656, A4656-S2963, that is on tonight's agenda for support. As, as, as I think Councilman Hirsch and maybe somebody else mentioned, Assemblywoman Angela McKnight is the chief sponsor of the bill. And for those of you who joined us last week or watched the video of the council meeting, you saw that she was here and was able to answer questions from the council members. The council will be voting tonight on support of that resolution. And as I recently stated, New Jersey is really blessed with so many good, community-oriented police officers. We cannot allow a few bad officers to hide behind a wall of secrecy that destroys trust and tarnishes the relationships between our residents and police departments any longer. The time has come for greater transparency and community input. I'm grateful to the Mayor's Equity Advisory Council for their ongoing work regarding creating a CCRB in Highland Park. And I'm also greatly appreciative of the Human Relations Commission for their input on the importance of this bill. Thank you as well to the members of the public who have spoken up about it. Again, several members who were with me today at the flag-raising ceremony mentioned it in their report. I do want to thank the Pride Center of New Jersey for participating each year with us in the flag-raising and for choosing Highland Park as their home. I also want to give another shout-out to Officer Caitlin Dean on her new initiative that the department has taken on to highlight safe spaces for the LGBTQ plus members of our community and visitors to our community. Councilman Hale spoke a great deal about that, so I don't wanna take up more time. But please note that if you do want to participate and can feature the sticker on your window or door, please do so. Several members have also spoken about Juneteenth. And in late 2020, Governor Murphy established an official holiday for the state to honor Juneteenth, that day commemorating the emancipation of all slaves in America. So this Friday, as somebody mentioned, the June 18th is our first official borough holiday closing in honor of Juneteenth. And just so you know what this is all about, because some people may not, on June 19th, 1865, when Union soldiers brought news of the Emancipation Proclamation to enslaved people in Galveston, Texas, and declared that all people held in slavery in the United States must be freed. Those in Galveston were the last slaves to learn of their freedom because Texas was a remote state. The event happened more than a month after the end of the Civil War and more than two years after President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation. So I just felt it was important for you to understand why we are celebrating this day and, and, and to let you know it was a long time in coming for, for the state of New Jersey. Finally, as Councilman Hirsch mentioned, Highland Park lost a true friend last week when Fred Cole passed on. Fred was unique. To me, he was a Renaissance man. That rare combination of a sports, baseball was his thing, coach and a great fan of sports, plus a soulful artist. I first met Fred about 22 years ago through Highland Park Politics. We campaigned together back then for my friend Merrill Frank, who became Mayor. Fred taught physical education in Old Bridge for 40 years. He coached baseball in Old Bridge and Matatchen High Schools for 30 years. Fred trained 11 players who went on to play baseball professionally and many others who had successful collegiate, all-state and all-county careers. But it was Fred's art that I remember the most. When well into his mid-50s, Fred began sculpting and assembling art from objects he picked up on the street in junkyards and garage sales. Fred created over 200 pieces of art, many of which have been featured in museums and galleries. But it is his colorful and sometimes whimsical pieces, often displayed at our Highland Park Arts in the Park events or our pop-up galleries in town, that I will always remember. His family is planning a memorial to Fred on Saturday, June 26th, at the New Brunswick Performing Arts Center at 3:00 PM. Thank you, Fred Cole, for being my friend and for all the joy you brought to so many of us in Highland Park. Okay. It's now on to our public participation, part one. We've allotted 21 minutes for this portion, three minutes maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to items on the agenda. If you want to speak on an item that is not listed, please do so at the second public comment session later in the meeting. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has lapsed. She will give you a warning when there is 30 seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute mark to make sure everyone has time to speak. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided or if the statement is abusive, obscene or irrelevant. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad or select the has, raise hand button in the application. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic that is on the agenda, please press star nine with the raise hand button now.
All right, Mayor, it looks like we have 25 attendees and 12 hands raised at this point. First up, Rebecca Cypress. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Great, thank you, everyone, good evening. This is Rebecca Cypress. I am calling in to speak about the resolution in support of Senate Bill 2963 and Assembly Bill 4656, which was sent to the council in November 2020 and has been with the Public Safety Committee since that time. In March 2021, the resolution was approved by the Human Relations Commission. And at the last council meeting, as you said earlier, bill sponsor Assemblywoman McKnight joined the work agenda to speak about the bill and answer questions. I'm so glad to see that this resolution has finally come to the full council for a vote. So thank you. This bill enables the creation of civilian complaint review boards at a municipal and/or county level with subpoena power and parallel investigatory power, which are critical to increasing transparency and accountability in policing. The recent Supreme Court decision requiring the release of names of officers who have faced disciplinary action is a good first step, but much more is needed to ensure true transparency and accountability. As Mayor Baraka of Newark said on June 3rd at his press conference, and Assemblywoman McKnight stated in her comments on June 1st during this work agenda, to be effective, a CCRB must include subpoena power, parallel investigatory power, true community representation and the ability to recommend discipline that will stick. In terms of subpoena power, independent oversight agencies need the ability to obtain necessary information in order to be effective overseers. Civilian review boards must have the power to subpoena witness and documentary evidence. Without this power, they cannot properly or effectively investigate cases. In terms of the concurrent or parallel investigatory powers, a civilian review board investigation must be allowed to run parallel to an internal affairs investigation of related conduct by law enforcement. Civilian review board investigations should not have to wait for internal affairs investigations to conclude before starting their investigations. Other types of law enforcement investigations are able to run at the same time as police investigations, and this should extend to civilian complaint review board investigations as well. I'd like to thank you again for allowing me to speak and I urge you to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Next.
I see Dan Batty. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, everyone, Dan Beatty, 304 Montgomery Street. I'm also speaking in support of legislation A4656-S2963 and urge you to vote in support of this resolution. In New Jersey, activists still write- In New Jersey, activists, civil rights groups, and residents in Newark have been fighting for decades to protect civil rights and ensure accountability and transparency in policing through a civil complaint review board. They have been at the forefront in advocating for investigating, reviewing, and auditing individual cases of patterns of potential civil rights violations and racial profiling, biased policing, the use of deadly force, illegal searches, excessive force, and unlawful arrests. Yet, police unions have been fighting all forms of accountability and transparency measures in the New Jersey courts. And I wanted to thank the council for changing their plans to actually vote on this and responding to the community tonight and urge you to vote to support and protect civil rights through supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Next.
Alrighty, looks like we have Ravi Duncan. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Ravi Dangan and I live in Lawrence Haven, Highland Park. I also wanted to talk in support of legislation A4656-S2963 and urge you to vote in support of this resolution. I have two points I'd like to make. One is that a CCRB must have adequate funding and must be able to provide disciplinary recommendations. In order for CCRBs to function effectively, they must be adequately funded. And A4656-S2963 allocates money to support the creation of municipal or county CCRBs. A civilian review board must ensure due process for officers and be able to recommend discipline that sticks for misconducts as it sees fit. Second point is that a CCRB must be intentional about community representation. Municipalities and cities in New Jersey must be allowed to create a vision for civilian oversight for themselves and develop their own oversight structures that have representation of trusted community groups on their boards. This means that CCRB members must represent the full economic and racial diversity of the communities they represent, with the majority of its members nominated by independent community activists and civil rights groups who have actively been working on issues of police accountability and transparency. So I do hope you will vote in support of this resolution. And I also wanted to thank Councilman Hirsch for supporting it and providing such a critical overview of what this bill is about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ravi.
Looks like Antoinette Gabaton Moss is up next. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. This is Pastor Antoinette Gabaton Moss on 419 Montgomery Street. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm speaking in support of legislation A4656-S2963 and really calling for you to vote in support of this important resolution. And you know what's really amazing is that Highland Park actually has a history of supporting civilian complaint review boards. The mayor has publicly expressed her support for greater accountability and transparency in policing and specifically her interest in creating CCRBs. As she mentioned, the MEAC is being tasked with reviewing and studying what that means. Furthermore, if we go back to 2002, the Highland Park Community Relations Task Force recommended a civilian complaint review board. And 19 years later, this is now the time it can be acted upon. So supporting this resolution is a critical step in moving this bill forward in the state legislature and increasing accountability and transparency in policing and public safety across the entire state of New Jersey and in our local community. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Pastor.
Looks like Daniel Stern Cardinal is up. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Dan Stern Cardinal, 221 Harper Street. I am not going to talk about the review board legislation. Instead, I see that cannabis is on the agenda for the later part of the meeting. So I just wanted to first say that I'm really pleased with how all of that stuff is moving forward so far. And I wanted to voice my very strong support for having not just retail for cannabis in town, but also onsite consumption. If we're going to get the biggest economic bang for our buck out of having cannabis in town, we need to allow onsite consumption. I know some residents are a little bit hesitant about that, but any argument that you could use against onsite cannabis consumption also holds for onsite alcohol consumption even more, given the cost of alcohol consumption. And I don't think anybody is suggesting that we get rid of all the liquor licenses in town that permit onsite alcohol consumption. I actually have a study that I can send everybody if you would want. It's called Does Cannabis Complement or Substitute Alcohol Consumption: A Systematic Review of Human and Animal Studies? It's from the Journal of Psychopharmacology, published in July 2020. And out of 64 human studies, in 30 studies, they found a substitution effect, meaning people were increasing their cannabis usage and correspondingly decreasing alcohol consumption. And only 17 studies found a complement effect, where both, where the cannabis use increased and it did not affect the alcohol consumption. What this means is that under most circumstances, there is a net benefit to public health for allowing cannabis consumption because of the lower public health costs associated with cannabis relative to alcohol consumption, which is a long-winded way of saying that we shouldn't fear having onsite cannabis consumption and the dangers associated with it, because it's actually a net good. Because in most cases, what we see is a corresponding decrease in alcohol consumption, which comes with far larger public health costs. So please get behind not just having cannabis businesses in town, but specifically retail with onsite consumption to maximize the economic benefit we get out of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Looks like John Sue. Please state your name and address and correct my pronunciation if you will.
Sure, that's John Sue.
Okay.
219 West Shirley Avenue, Edison, New Jersey. I just want to express my support for the workshop item for the resolution supporting Medicare for All. While the resolution won't be voted on tonight, I hope it will be voted on in the next council meeting in July. Our Congressman Frank Pallone has co-sponsored Congresswoman Prima Jai Paul's Medicare for Act, Medicare for All Act of 2021. A petition signed by 100-plus Highland Park residents expressed support for this resolution, which I have sent to Councilwoman Canavera. So I'll read some of the comments. Michael Leahy, "We're only as healthy as those with no health coverage. This pandemic has made that abundantly clear. No person should have lost their health or life because they cannot afford the care they require. I fully support Medicare for All." Gregory Herzog, "Universal healthcare is long overdue in the United States. I support Highland Park joining this effort." Amanda Lyons, "Healthcare is a human right." Patricia Kaufman, "Everyone should get healthcare, not just affordable insurance." "Universal healthcare is what every other developed country in the world has. We know most of the countries in Europe have universal, one form of universal healthcare or another. The country where I was born, Taiwan, also has universal healthcare. In fact, officials from Taiwan traveled to the US to learn how to implement their system. Universal healthcare will also reduce municipal budgets since boroughs and municipalities will not have to provide health insurance for their employees. Universal healthcare will also go a long way in supporting small businesses. One in five small businesses say health insurance is their number one concern. Six in 10 small businesses say a premium increase of 10% to 15% will put them out of business. Universal healthcare will allow small businesses to be on a level playing field with large corporations, and small businesses are an important part of the fabric of Highland Park. For all these reasons, I name more, I support the Medicare for All resolution. I hope the council will as well. Thank you."
Thank you, John.
Mayor, I just wanted to point out, we have eight hands left and eight minutes left, so I just thought I'd point that out.
Okay, so we can only go as far as each of you speaking allow your neighbors to go. So if you can keep your comments to one minute, we could probably get everybody in. Okay, go ahead, Terry.
Next is Abby Stern Cardinal. You know what to do.
Hi, yeah, Abby Stern Cardinal, Harper Street. I wanted to bring up a couple of things on the work session agenda. Mainly, just I see that you're talking about going back in person, which I think is great in theory. And you know, I'd love to be able to attend meetings in person again. A couple of comments about that. One, I would love to see them continue to be recorded live and have live streaming. And I hope that that's part of the conversation. And the second thing is, I am a little concerned health-wise about how we're going to be, you know, keeping our community safe and not having a council meeting be a place where, you know, COVID spreads. I, you know, I'm aware of some people who are regulars, who are choosing not to get vaccinated. And I am a little concerned about that safety situation. And I'm just hoping to voice that I would love for there to be some kind of screening for vaccination, if possible. Or, you know, I know a lot of places are saying masks are, you know, on our system. And I think that there's a lot of risks to that. And, you know, as a progressive town, we can go beyond that. And I'd love to see more safety in place, especially for the occasions that kids are involved at the council meetings, not putting them at risk. I know kids are sometimes brought in and we like to have them be part of our, you know, our community and honor them for things and also, you know, bring them to meetings, show them how public discourse works. And I think that's great. So for anyone 12 and over, I would really love to see some way to enforce that we are keeping the people who can't get vaccinated yet safe, and that can go beyond the honor system. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Okay.
Looks like next up is Peter Spool. Please state your name and address.
Hi, this is Peter Spool at 146 Graham Street in Highland Park. So I just wanted to say I'm in agreement with all the previous speakers who were in support of the resolution to support Assembly Bill 4656 and Senate Bill 2963. I wanted to add that funding is also an issue. The only funding in the bill is for education of prospective complaint review board members. So since the state is not providing funding for the investigations and the subpoena power, communities and counties will have to remember that those things cost money and will have to provide funding for any complaint review board to be effective. I also just wanted to ask a question about the electric scooter ordinance. It mentions rules for their use in parks. The only parks that I'm aware of in Highland Park of any size are the county parks. I don't suppose that the community has jurisdiction in the county parks to support those rules.
So Peter, we'll have to get back to you. There's more questions that have come up about that ordinance and so, or resolution. So we're going to have to take those things into consideration as we move forward with this. And I'm sure people will be looking into those things.
Thank you.
Okay. Terry?
The next one comes up, divestNJ. Could you please state your name and address for the record? You'll have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, it's Tina Weisner.
I guess that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I changed my ID. I meant to. So.
Nina, could you just state your address, please?
143 North Fifth Avenue, Highland.
Thank you.
Okay, so let me be quick. I did just, okay, on the going-in-person meeting, I would hope that you're also going to have a streaming or Zoom or an ability to call in. I am somebody who is now immune-compromised and can't be in person. So from ADA point of view, I think that I would hope that that remains an option or I wouldn't be able to attend. Number two, I was active in 2002. It wasn't the Human Relations Committee then. It was the Human Rights Commission or Committee that was then changed to the Human Relations Committee. So that's just a historical point. And I supported a civilian review board then, and I continue to support it today. So I'm glad that you have a resolution in support of that, of Assemblywoman McKnight's bill. I came to support the Medicare for All resolution as well. And I'm very happy to see that you're going to vote on it, not today, but next time. And I think there was no greater example of the tragedy of not having people covered or having healthcare in the middle of a pandemic. And mostly, it was essential workers who were putting their lives on the line and who were in the most vulnerable categories on top of it. And then, of course, they didn't have healthcare. So how many grocery workers died? How many bus drivers died? On and on and on. Anyway, I hope you support that. And I'm glad to hear that you'll be voting on the civilian review board tonight. So thank you for all that you did just to announce that the Plastic Bag Bill will be going back, as Terry said, August 1st.
Thank you, Tina.
Mayor, just to point out, we have about a minute and a half left, and we still have six hands. Do you want me to take another, or how do you want to do it?
Take one more, and then anybody else will just have to ask them to please wait till the second session for a public comment.
Okay, it looks like Maureen Cranley. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Maureen Cranley, 130 Forest Drive, Avenue. I'm a driver, I should say. Okay, I'm here to oppose the attempts to bring any marijuana business into Highland Park. I'm a family with two kids, two teenagers, and a husband. I think that the perception that it would be economically advantageous to allow marijuana businesses within Highland Park or any residential town that is, is erroneous. It's misguided and it's shortsighted. Based on other areas of the country that have been experimental cases in which now there is a realization that the human costs and other damages resulting after not very long outweighs any economic windfalls or big bangs, big bucks, as was mentioned earlier, that were falsely marketed. Human well-being, especially that of our youth, families, and young adults should be a priority and should supersede any push for economic gain that occurs at the expense of people's mental and physical health. Science already shows us the detrimental effects of marijuana use on people's judgment, mood, motivation, towards other addictions and other areas of personal agency. Just because once illegal substances that are still illegal on the federal level have been decriminalized at a state level, doesn't mean that suddenly, as if by a magic wand, the well-known harm and dangers of controlled substances vanish into thin air, no pun intended. I think that allowing cannabis businesses to take hold in Highland Park, it's an offensive attack against the treasury we have here of families, youth, the community, even the education system in Highland Park. I think we owe Highland Park better. And I think that if we go ahead with this, we're probably going to not so, not so long future, or soon future, near future, I should say, regret what we've done. And it's going to be really hard to pull it back, at least according to what I'm looking at in the legislation. So I really think we should be second guessing this and reconsidering it for the sake of not just our youth, our families, and just the overall well-being of Highland Park. Highland Park is a lovely little town that we've been living in for three or four years. And I just would hate to see it go to pot, really. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Maureen. Okay, so anybody else, please bear with us and come back to talk with us in the second portion. And so we're going to move along with the agenda here. We're moving on to ordinances that require first reading. Clerk, could you please report on the introduction of the Salary Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance to provide for and determine the rate of compensation of each officer and employee of the Borough of Highland Park and the method of payment of such compensation has been introduced in writing by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title? Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
They're moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right. The next um ordinance on first reading is the Electric Scooter Ordinance. There's been much conversation about that tonight. Councilwoman Foster?
Mayor, I moved um to table that um for now, because we need to do some more work. We have some more work to do that we. We have some more work to do on Public Safety Committee before we decide to present it here.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, then uh may I have a um. All in favor of moving this ordinance, this res- this ordinance to a later date?
In favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mayor, I, do we know the substance of the concerns with the resident with the ordinance?
Um, there's so many of them, Matt. That it would take quite a bit of time to go through each of them. But I'm sure Councilwoman Foster would be happy to bring you up to speed on that.
Mayor, I'll be happy to talk to you offline regarding this. But there's some things that we need to look at first before we present it out to the public and follow certain guidelines that have been put in place.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the following uh stored items eight fourteen A through fourteen L?
They'll move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman. Sorry. I wanted to actually make a motion to table one of the, one of the uh.
Oh, okay. So, so um Borough Attorney, um, there is a motion from um Councilman Hirsch to table one of the items on the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, the council could take that up. You can pull that matter off the consent agenda. Approve the consent agenda and then come back to that item that uh Councilman Hirsch would like to discuss.
Okay, so Councilman Hirsch, would you like to formalize that motion to?
Sure. Motion to table uh item fourteen F on the consent agenda, the Resolution six twenty one one fifty seven.
Okay, um, do I have a second? Was that you, Phil?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of tabling item number uh fourteen F? And removing it from the consent agenda?
Aye.
Motion.
Okay. Okay, so then I'm going to go back on the original consent agenda. Uh, may I have a motion to adopt consent agenda items fourteen A through. Uh fourteen E and fourteen G through fourteen. A L.
They're moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes, on all except for fourteen. Um, I, I'm not gonna vote on that one because I have you had to use the Highland Park gives a who pantry at times. So I'm abstaining from that one.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes, to all.
Councilman Hale?
Yes, to all.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right, um, there are two uh resolutions that are separate from the consent agenda. First one is, may I have a motion to adopt or reject a resolution to accept the Clean Communities Grant?
Ma- Madam Mayor, are are we gonna go back to the one that Matt vote wanted to table before getting to those, just as a matter of procedure? Or is, did we?
Well, he's tabling it for another date.
Okay, I I I just thought he was gonna explain the issue for tabling it for another date. But it's okay, if we can just table it, it's fine. I just want, I I thought you said we were gonna go back to it, but to have him talk about it.
Yeah.
But it's okay.
Mayor, if you want.
Um, it's up to you, Matt, do you?
I I I miss it.
No, sure, sure. Thanks, Councilman Hale. Uh, this, this, this um, this resolution is obviously very important uh and um and necessary. But it just needs to be discussed by the um Recreation and Arts Committee.
All right, now I'm going to go forward with the separate uh, the reading of the separate resolutions. May I have a motion to uh adopt or reject uh the resolution to accept the Clean Communities Grant?
A motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right, may I have a motion to adopt or reject um the resolution in support of legislation to create a civilian review board? A forty six fifty six S twenty nine sixty three.
Motion to adopt?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes, definitely, been looking forward to this.
Councilwoman Foster?
Uh, it has been a long time coming. As Tina said, back in two thousand, this was the the conversation of the day. And um it took to two thousand twenty one till we're there. I was happy to have spoken to Assemblywoman McKnight. And then not only talk to her about the bill, but. Also invite her to come to our council session and in our work session and to have a conversation with my fellow council members to provide clarity. And if anything else that was needed. I spoke to her again today and I told her it's on our agenda and I would give her a call tonight after we vote. She's really excited um to hear that. So with that overwhelmingly, yes.
Councilman George?
This bill has been a long time coming. The reforms in police work, where I spend a lot of my professional life, are well deserved and absolutely necessary. I have some reservations about this bill that were discussed with Assemblywoman Nick Knight. I have concerns about the legislation's requirements for membership. I have concerns about the lack of funding, which is going to fall on municipalities. And I have some serious concerns about the lack of organization and coordination between municipal boards, which are optional. And county boards, which they haven't decided whether they're going to be optional or not. And my concern uh from observations and reality is we can, we can go four blocks in any direction and be in another town. Where this is treated differently. We may have some that treat it laxly. We have some that are over ambitious. We may have some towns that don't bother and we have no consistency. And one of the most important things that comes out of this is that every citizen is treated the same. Every officer gets treated the same as the person they're accused of having done something to. And every witness is treated the same as the witnesses who have, who who saw what was going on. Everyone needed, needs to be treated the same. And the lack of consistency in this bill is one of the biggest problems that I see leading to its failure. That being said, I don't think that a vote against it goes anywhere. Because we have to start somewhere and hopefully it gets engineered a little bit better than it is right now. Because there were significant defects in this legislation. It is overly one sided, but we have to start somewhere. And I can tell you from twenty five years of experience in living it, that we have to start. We've got to get it started. And it's not about the police. It's not about disciplining them. It's about disciplining ourselves because society in general needs it. And maybe when we start to look at police conduct and we can say to people, this is not acceptable for any of you. In a town that values community policing the way we do. So therefore reluctantly, and with those reservations. And hopefully Assemblywoman McKnight gets the message and goes back and fixes this bill, I vote yes.
Councilman Hale?
So I I I'm voting yes for this bill as as well. One of the things that I wanted to thank um Councilwoman Foster and also Assemblywoman uh McKnight. It is a discussion about the potential role of counties in creating a civilian complaint review board. As Councilman George mentioned, um, there are some problems with potential inconsistencies in the application of this at a municipal level. There certainly could be, and I would expect that there could be civilian complaint review boards where um that are formed in some communities where the police. Can do no wrong and the civilian complaint review board will back them up in in that way. I also think that there could be communities where the police can do no right. Um, and I don't know that Highland Park is that. I don't know of a specific community. I just think that there is a potential really strong solution um contained within this bill and contained and with. Um, uh, potential in moving forward of creating civilian complaint review boards with local um uh municipal involvement at the county level. Um, so this bill, as as Councilwoman George said, is not perfect. It has a ways to go, um, but it is a step and it is an important step. We need to have civilian complaint review boards um that are are significant. And and this provides for the start of that. I do hope as we move forward, we will seriously consider um ways of strengthening this. Um, ways of 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 pushing counties and pushing our county um towards having um strong civilian complaint review boards. So I I I think that's a a goal um moving forward. I think this is, uh, as as Councilman George said, I think this is a an important first step. As we've heard so much tonight, um, there, this is a long time coming. And I think it is important um uh to take that step. Um, and and Highland Park to be a leader in that step um in in comparison to many communities. This is a long process. It's been a long process. It is not an over process, but this is an important thing for Highland Park um to do um as we support uh uh the 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 idea and the goals of this legislation. So I I vote yes for this.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Um, I just wanted, you know, I want to first thank the um uh, the uh, the advocates who um. Who worked with the council and the mayor's equity advisory and the Human Relations Commission and the bill sponsor, Assemblywoman McKnight. On uh on advancing this important legislation. I don't know how many other towns have passed resolutions in support of this bill. But if any of the upcoming speakers happens to know, I'd be, I'd be very interested in 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 that. The um, I think one of the, one of the things that, you know, you know, we're, we're hamstrung as a local government on a lot of, on a lot of things often. And I think one of the things, though, that we can do as a form of of our own advocacy is to support legislation that will directly benefit uh our our residents. And I think that this is uh an enormously important piece of 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 uh. This is enormous, an enormously important bill uh that uh will positively affect um uh, you know, Highland Park residents. But also change the culture and to kind of change the paradigm that we see law enforcement. Uh, I think that that's, you know, when we, when we try to wordsmith legislation that that's before us. Um, I see our role more as 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 um. Supporting the overall intent of the legislation. You know, we're not the uh, you know, we're not, we're, we're, we're not the advocates or the lobbyists who are uh, you know, who are involved in. Uh, wordsmithing and the finer details of the legislation. That's going to go through the wringer for sure. This bill has not had a committee hearing yet. And I think that that's, you know, our, our vote of confidence for this legislation is an important piece on getting this bill heard in i- i- in an assembly and senate subcommittee. Where further discussion can take place. You can testify uh, you know, in support of this. And I think that that's really our role here, uh, you know, as as a council. So uh enthusiastically, yes, it's way past due and uh thanks, thanks to all.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
First, I'd like to um thank the Public Safety Committee and their Chair, Councilwoman Foster. For um even bringing um Assemblywoman McKnight to our last work session. Um, uh, really gave us a one on one time with her as well. And um I know I also saw in the bill too, the funding um, which is probably very little from the state. Um, as the Chair of Finance, I look forward to um adding that budget line into our budget. And working with Councilwoman Foster. Um, when it comes to budget time, I am like a penny pincher with public safety. Because there is such a big chunk of our budget. But I'm saying it publicly, so Councilwoman Foster could bring that up and say. You said on June fifteenth that you were gonna fund this line item. But um really, whatever we have to do funding wise, we gotta get creative. And um just looking forward to getting you guys um started, so yes.
Okay. Okay, we're now moving on to our second public participation portion. And um. Uh, each speaker has three minutes, but may comment on any topic. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and will offer a thirty second warning and then indicate when three, three minutes has lapsed. The session will wrap up by nine P M. Uh, if you want to speak, please raise your hand by pressing the star nine button on your keypad or select the raise hand button on your application. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. All right, please begin when you get called on to uh by telling us your first and last name and your street address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on the agenda or off the agenda, please press star nine or the raise hand button now.
Okay, it looks like we have Josephine Jaimo. Please state your name and address.
My name is Josephine Jaimo. I live at one, two, three Johnson Street. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, I'm uh calling in tonight. Thank you very much for the opportunity to um. Uh, share my support of the Medicare for All legislation uh that's being proposed. Um, as uh other callers have stated. Um, Medicare and healthcare should be a right and not a privilege in the United States. As it is in uh every other developed country except the United States. I myself have had to forego uh any of a number of uh healthcare. Uh, services, prescriptions and the like, because I could not afford them. And Medicare for All, which would make healthcare more affordable for people. It's not, um, it does cover everything, but it's certainly better than the current system we have. Healthcare should not be treated like a commodity that you can buy and sell. It's immoral. And it should be considered a right, not a privilege. Uh additionally, I would like to share that um. Well, uh, several years ago. I was working for an employer and had a health insurance that I provide, I I paid into. And I had an MRI done uh while I was employed. Um, subsequently, because of erroneous information that the employer gave to the healthcare provider. Um, that the uh coverage was for that procedure was denied. And uh. because the provider then took me to court, I had to wind up taking the employer to court. And fortunately, thank you, the judge ruled in my favor. But of course, I had to spend all that time and effort and I was out several hundred dollars for all the court costs. So all of that would have been completely unheard of if Medicare for All were enacted. So I support this and I urge you to vote in favor of it.
Thank you, Josephine.
Okay, it looks like the next person is coming up is Bo-Tan. Please state your full name and address for the record.
Yeah, hi, this is Mary Bo-Tan, 709 Madison Ave.
Great.
Yeah, I wanted to speak to the issue of, you know, items being tabled. For example, the same way we can table the scooter conversation, we really should be tabling the marijuana conversation. The New Jersey League of Municipalities and also the Institute of Local Government Attorneys have both recommended that towns opt out. And we should not be blatantly disregarding that very good advice. There are several things to this point, not the least of which is the fact that each of you has actually taken an oath of office to uphold the US Constitution, and that does include federal law. None of these products are approved under federal law by the FDA or the CSA. And you need to be aware that if you invite these businesses in, you demand fees from them, you take the fees, you deposit them. You are each as officials of our government and also even as individuals, you are breaking the law. And I I think you need to be prepared that, you know, as a taxpayer, we do not we do not want to see our tax money go towards lawyer fees to defend you breaking the law. We have a right that our tax money is spent in other ways. I don't want to have my my public money spent with our our attorney to defend you as public officials who broke the law knowingly. And as individuals, certainly, our town attorney should not be paid to defend you as individuals. You need to get your own counsel. Speaking of the taxpayer issue as well, I know we have a huge emphasis on always reducing property tax, you know, in Highland Park. But we have to ask the question, if pot did not exist, what other industries would we be focusing on? You know, we have so many great ideas in this town. As one of the other speakers said, do not let Highland Park go to pot. This is a very controversial issue. There is a huge amount of potential detriment, not the least of which is the fact that when you bring in pot industries, pot businesses, you are completely normalizing it for every child in this town, no matter what you say to them about not doing it or using it or buying it. There's also the issue of reducing our property values and increasing crimes, even nuisance crimes. Furthermore, the marijuana industry is not eligible for any state or local economic incentive. May I finish, please?
Mary, I'm going to ask Terry if there are other speakers lined up. So you're welcome to come back to finish, Mary, but it's not fair to the others.
Sure, that's fine. Yeah, thank you, Gail.
Okay.
Mayor, are we, can we respond?
Not now, please.
Okay. Well, I know for not responding to the speaker, I had a question for Ed, but okay.
I just wanted to, I usually make a point of mentioning, we we at this moment, we have 23 attendees tonight and four additional hands at this point.
Okay.
Next is Abby Stern Cardinal.
Hi, Abby Stern Cardinal again, Harper Street. So just a quick response to the previous speaker and then I will say what I had wanted to say. I hope that you can all see that, you know, saying that you are breaking the law is absolutely absurd. You know, I hope that none of you will let this ridiculous propaganda affect you, and I I don't think you will. But, you know, there's there's nothing that was said that should should be given any kind of real discussion, in my opinion, which I'll go on to my other comment, which is an extension of what I had talked about before, which is, you know, switching back to in-person and just as I've spoken to all of you about before, the structure of these meetings and the lack of public comment at the work session. I would, I don't know if when you are going back in person, and again, I, you know, I'm not able to comment after the work session. So I I don't know what you'll be discussing, but I'd really love that that for that to be part of the discussion again, to allow us as the public to engage in your work session. I think there's a lot of really important things discussed there. I know there's a concern about these meetings going especially long and having more people talk. But I think, as you can see, they are just shifted to an earlier comment as I'm doing now. And it it takes away from our ability to really engage with the topic exactly as I'm doing now, where I don't know exactly what you'll be saying. I I may be saying things that have no relevance. You may be already able to, you know, have the discussions that I'm bringing up, but I have no way of knowing that and I have no way of, you know, waiting to see and then deciding if if it's something that I, as a member of the public, want to discuss. So I think it's really important that you bring back that public comment at the work session. I know you've said many times that you don't make any formal decisions, but you know, there's a lot of really important discussions and I think there's a lot of consensus building at those sessions. So it is important to allow the public to comment. So either if you're continuing to have these meetings online, have that be part of the discussion to bring it in. Or if what you're discussing is bringing them back in person, please do incorporate how you can bring that back, which was a really important component that you had before. And again, I don't think this will add significant extra time to your meetings because it's just getting shifted around. So thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a few more hands. Sakrowitz, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Harold Sakrowitz, 617 South Fifth Avenue.
Hello.
Okay, I just want to make a few comments about the redevelopment process that I've been watching. Before I I get to that a second, the at the last meeting, at the end of the last meeting, Mr. Baumann sort of, well, he said that we were being unfair. I think that he's essentially claiming that we don't appreciate the time and effort that they're putting in and also the amount of community involvement that they've invited. I guess I don't agree with that. I think maybe it has to do with our definitions. As far as community involvement goes, not many of us actually think that three minutes every, once every month is and then asking questions that don't get answered, we don't really think of that as involvement. Now, in fairness, Matt Hale did volunteer once and did speak to me and my wife, and he he took probably over an hour. And we got a sense of what he was thinking and sort of what his vision is. And surprisingly, most of what he told us was never repeated when we listened to the presentations. As an example, in speaking to him, he mentioned, which I thought was a good idea, the idea of having free parking on Fridays to help out with the farmer's market. All right, that never came up in in the planning. The idea of not appreciating the time and effort people are putting in. I guess we do, but work working on a project for nine months is not synonymous with the result being good. Okay, it could have been, I mean, this project is hard and, well, again, I I I don't think that
Thirty seconds.
Okay, at that last, just at the last candidate's night, most of you who were running said that Highland Park is such a great resource because the residents have expertise in so many areas. And yet, so far, it seems that the redevelopment group has not involved the Main Street people in any meaningful way. And those of us that read what the what the Main Street were pretty impressed. Thanks.
So I I just want to say that it's erroneous to think we were not involving the Main Street group. I'm not going to address that any further, but conversations have been held with the Main Street group as we were progressing and and as recent as today, I believe there was yet another conversation. Is there anybody else, Terry?
Yes, Mayor, I see two hands. It looks like the third one just popped up. It looks like Pam Dorman, you're next. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Pam Dorman, 423 South Fifth. I wanted to speak to the way borough business is conducted right now with remote. I'm a little late to the game because we've been doing this a really long time, well, more than a year. And I I'm concerned that the format does not allow for residents to know who is quote "present" at these meetings. When there's an issue, it's helpful, I mean, I know I've been talking with lots of other people in Highland Park about several different issues. It's helpful for me to know who else is is present and able to speak to certain issues. I I'm on lots of different remote organizational meetings. And this is the only one where there's no list of participants. I don't know whether because of government issues, it's not allowed, but I personally find I know it doesn't feel transparent. And as I talk to people, it it it's really lacking in being informative to to residents, both this and also committee meetings. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Next is Dan Stern Cardinal.
Hi, Dan Stern Cardinal, 221 Harper Street. In case you're wondering, yes, Abby and I are sitting next to each other in the same room on two different computers. So I'll keep this very short because I know we're getting towards the end here. I just want to, I I know everybody in this meeting is pretty familiar with the issue and the data behind it. But I just want to make sure everybody, including anyone who watches this later, is on the same page. So I I just want to say on cannabis, it's harder for minors to acquire a drug once it is legal because that undercuts the black market. The incentives are all to do it through the legal channel. And that it's a lot harder to get black market things when they are legal compared to illegal. It's not associated legal cannabis and retail specifically is not associated with an increase in crime rate and for that matter, an increase in traffic accidents and deaths associated with cannabis use. And this is about as far from a controversial issue as you can get in Highland Park. I think we voted for it about 70/30 in favor of legalization in the election last year. So in terms of this being controversial in Highland Park, find another issue where the town agreed, 70% of the town agrees on anything. I think you'd be, I think you'd be hard pressed to find another one where the consensus is that strong. So thank you for moving forward on the cannabis stuff. And the second thing I wanted to say is I've obviously been following the redevelopment stuff very closely, both the redevelopment entity meetings, the planning board meetings, and I want to thank you all for all of your work on that. And I was really happy to see that it's mostly moving forward from the planning board. And I hope that the progress continues. I really like the the ideas that are coming out of that work so far. So thank you for all of that work and keep up the good work there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like Mary Bo-Tan is back.
Okay.
State your name and address again for the record.
Yeah, hi, Mary Bo-Tan, 709 Madison.
You wanted to finish, Mary, right?
Oh, yes. Yeah, thank you, Gail. Where where I had left off was the fact that, you know, marijuana businesses under S-21 are not eligible to receive any state or local economic incentives. And this is really important for our redevelopment. You know, we have a very small town. We identify the entire community as an area of need of rehabilitation. And as we, you know, approach each project, every single one is being given its own redevelopment plan. So again, you know, this is, these are very complex issues. They are not the type of issues where you just jump in and start issuing licenses and bringing in bulk storage of marijuana, lounges, numerous pot shops, courier services. This is, this is really serious. And once a town gets into any of these businesses, it can't get out. These businesses are grandfathered. The opt-out recommendation was made for a reason. Even though, you know, many towns in Highland Park opted for legalization, the ballot did not say, do you want up to 14 businesses of this nature in your town? It did not say, do you want your property values to be at risk? It did not say, do you want the potential for increased crime in your area, including nuisance crimes? And these are all documented issues. The the ballot, excuse me. The other thing to keep in mind, you know, on this is that the opt-out was specifically, it's being offered to towns so they can understand that not one size fits all. We are an extremely small town. We don't have any areas where kids will not walk past these businesses. We don't have any place where, even if you don't, there's no signage and even if there's no advertising, soon as you put these in, kids know it. We are responsible for these kids. The last thing I'd like to say is also the New Jersey State Municipal Alliance specifically said, you know, this adds to the burden of our hospital networks and our first responders. And we should not be in a position to add to that burden. There are many other industries and types of businesses we should be looking at, not pot. Thank you. Please table it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, anybody else?
There's no more members of the public with their hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, Terry. Then we're going to move to a five-minute recess. And we will all join back here at 8:53.
Matt, I almost joined you down at Borough Hall today in the fishbowl.
Oh, yeah. Oh, my God. You should, you should come on down. It's good. The Wi-Fi is good.
Well, I wouldn't know. As a chair, I was never given
You can get it. I can. It's I think you just asked, I think you, I think, well, there's public Wi-Fi. So so there's both. There's there's
Yeah, the public Wi-Fi is horrible.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yes.
Maybe where I'm sitting, I don't even know what I'm connected to right now, but it seems to be good.
When I sat at that head table with the computer for the Human Commission for Universal Access, could not get the public Wi-Fi to work.
You know what used to happen at those committee meetings? It would turn off. Like, it would just like, yeah, I remember that. It was, it was, it was, it was, the signal was weak, but then it would, I I don't know if it was on a it would just shut down.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hear you. Well, Terry, I'm sure Terry can help.
Terry, I'm giving it to you. But you're, it really has to stay, you can't just give it to every member.
Oh, no.
Because it's, you know, it's a security thing.
Yeah, no. I don't even really need it. I can, when I come there, you could put it in for me.
Okay, I was about to text you. There you go.
No, when I
It's on my very
Long list.
Hard to tap into post-it note that I carry. Hard to tap into post-it note that I carry.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, I actually like had to put this up, and I'm hiding in my bathroom at the moment doing this meeting because there's just too much going on in my house.
Yeah, yes. Yep. It's, I mean, it'll be nice. It'll be nice to get to get these meetings back in person. Once we have it all figured out. I think that'll be.
My only worry is there's one week out of the month where I have like back-to-back meetings, three nights out of the week. So I'm worried about logistics.
Health and Human Services, I remember. That's, that's a big load.
That's a tough one.
But what I love about it is it's almost every single commission that I have worked on in the past, so I didn't have to really give any of them up. I'm just with them in a different role.
Totally. And it's where most of our volunteers are too, which is exciting. I will be right back. I'm sorry.
So I didn't realize council members could elect representatives at their, at these work sessions. I kid, did you see Stephanie's fill in there?
Gail got knocked off of Zoom.
Oh, boy. Well, she must come back. I think it's more likely internet knocked her off of Zoom.
Who's that?
Gail. So give her a minute to come back.
She might have just tried to mute, you know, to mute and shut off video and shut it off by mistake.
Yeah, exit meeting.
I've done that more than once.
I tried to, I had to launch one of the commission meetings on a terrorism. Took me two tries because I wanted to leave the meeting and I just couldn't help but press End Meeting for All. So then everybody got bumped out. It was this whole rigmarole. I'm like, wrong button.
But the last meeting went fine, so thank you.
We changed all the settings. Everything worked. Excellent. That was dramatic. I mean, not bad for I was in the middle of cooking dinner. I figured that out. Yeah.
So how about that PSCNG?
Oh, my God, Matt. That guy with the payloader that runs the sand, the filter and up and down. He's a maniac. I just heard from the mayor, her, the mayor just said her Wi-Fi kicked out.
I told them.
So.
I mean, I don't know. She's comfortable. She could call and I could give her
That's what she said she was doing.
Login from her phone.
That's what she's doing. Yeah, it's on the login instruction.
He can go over to who's the closest to her.
That's probably me.
You, Phil.
I'm not forgetting about that money when it comes time to it. Just letting you know. I'll be like, on June 16th at 8:32 PM.
Is the 15th on that? A cat.
Yet another reason to get back to in-person.
We almost made it through a meeting without an issue.
I probably see probably three out of four of the meetings I do has a black cat. And mine's walking by, but he's not on the screen.
We have a white puffy dog, so that's okay.
No puppy. He's a grown 10-year-old.
All dogs are puppies.
Okay, so are we missing anybody? Joan here.
It looks like Ed's on. I don't, I assume he's here.
Do we have Matt?
Oh, there's Ed. He's coming back.
There we go.
There's Ed, Matt Hirsch, Matt Hale, Stephanie. Okay, I think we're all here, right? Joan, you're there?
I'm here.
Okay, very good. All right, we're going to go into our work session at this point. And we're starting off with basketball hoops at Malamoc Graff Park. Hirsch.
Thank you, Mayor. This was, we delayed this conversation after at the last meeting because we had the Assemblywoman McKnight join us. And it wasn't, it wasn't pressing enough to extend the meeting, but this was a, so we've had a series of requests come in over the last month, starting before my, I mean, in the last year or so, starting before my, my time on the council. And this is in Malamoc Park, in Malamoc Graff Park, otherwise known as Carcy Park. It's a beautiful, it's a beautiful small park right there nestled into the neighborhood. And there's a former basketball court, not full-size, but there's a court kind of area that used to be home to basketball hoops. Those hoops were removed at some point in the mid-'90s. And I think we, there's, there's a lot of history there. So why they were removed and under what pretenses they, they were removed. But this discussion is really about talking about the steps needed and considerations that we need to take in re-establishing that, that component of active recreation in the park. I'm always, I just want to, and Terry, I guess I'll turn it over to you, but, you know, I'm always wary of when we remove assets like benches, swing sets, basketball hoops for seemingly arbitrary reasons. And that's not to diminish any of the concerns that any residents might have. But I do think it's really important that our parks, and we don't have many municipal parks, I think someone pointed out before, that, you know, our two most prominent parks are indeed County. And I believe we have just two municipal, well, three municipal parks. And only one of them really has a level of recreation to it at Malamoc Graff Park. The Totlauton Felton Avenue is very small and has a little piece of equipment. So I do, I do think that, you know, our attention does need to be on these, on these important assets. And, and that a discussion is necessary to talk about, you know, how we can really restore the park and make it into, you know, a real neighborhood asset. And I guess, I guess I just wanted to, you know, hear any ideas or feedback about, about this. And maybe Terry, I don't know if you had anything to, to add.
No, I mean, we've spoken, you know, in your committee, you discussed it. Oh. Should I continue? I saw hands go up also. So I did do, I am doing some look back into, there has, you know, the history a little bit and also looking forward, you know, kind of trying to gauge potential costs. It kind of depends on ultimately where council rests with moving forward. But, you know, you know, I'll get you some, some ballpark costs. It will kind of depend on how big of a facility we want to replace there, any other work that might need to be done, kind of as part of that, as well as any other improvements, you know. But the work has begun on that. And it kind of, there's a little, the reason I did get some numbers, but I'm hesitant to put them out there because it was based on kind of typical square footage. And I'm not, it's not clear to me if the pad that's currently there, if it's, my sense is if it's somewhat salvageable in terms of the under, you know, the supporting structure, the cost would be considerably less than if we had to kind of dig everything up and reinstall. So that's why I'd rather not get into the numbers at this point. But if somebody, you know. But I guess that's all.
I see, I see a few hands. So I'm going to go to Phil first, Tara, and then Matt.
Just briefly, Mayor, you know, I think that I agree with Matt. We talked about it some time ago. I did take a look at it as well. Terry's right, the surfacing looks a little dangerous for people who would actually be playing. There's a good risk that, you know, some middle schoolers out there shooting hoops and someone might, you know, twist an ankle or something. Such being said, if we're going to, you know, put the hoops back up, we probably do need to look at resurfacing. But I do, it's an asset for the neighborhood. It's an asset, you know, designed to, to serve, especially our kids. I think it's important that we put, we put the park back into service. I know anecdotally that the reason was neighbors complained that people were out there playing. But I think it's a self, it's a self-limiting project, especially as we're unlikely to put lights in for night games. It's relatively self-limiting as it gets dark. And I think it's an important thing that we should look at.
Thank you, Phil. Okay, Tara?
As the mother of a 12-year-old, I think it's a great idea. I do know that we have in the past talked about a skate park, but looking at the money aspects, a basketball court would be much less money and less more. Plus, I think more people would benefit from the basketball court than they would the skate park. So I think it's a great idea personally.
Okay, and Matt Hale?
I was just, my memory is that we did talk about a skate park over there. I certainly think we should do something to make a recreation improvement. I think it could be a really nice place and significantly better than it is. But I, I thought that Josh Fine was, was, had a, had a, passed a resolution or wanted a resolution of some sort about. And I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't remember, but I, I thought that there was discussions of a skate park. And I know that's a lot of money. And if people are angry about having basketball courts, maybe skate parks, not. You know, I don't know. I just, I know that we had a discussion about a skate park over there at one point, so.
So I see Elsie and Matt Hirsch.
I'm gonna follow up with Matt Hale and pull Stephanie in because I know Stephanie had started to work on this project a number of years ago, and then she passed it on to Josh. And I don't know whatever happened to it, but we were working on doing something in that area. Stephanie, do you remember what, or do you know where the status is regarding the sprinkler park that we were looking at in that area? Because I know it was a cost-saving method, and we were even talking to the county at one point about some kind of funding opportunity.
Yeah, so we decided because we couldn't ask, I know, we couldn't go to the county and say we wanted all of these projects. And then there was talk about putting the splash pad over near the high school.
Right.
That's where it kind of ended because we were going to try to ask, I think, for the track also over there. Um, but we, it, we really didn't go anywhere at that time. And then it went to the skate park and then Josh had it, so.
Yeah.
So, I mean, yeah, here's, here's the thing, you know, it's, and I remember, I wasn't on the council, but I do remember when, when, when the council identified Carcy Park as a place to explore a possible skate park. I think that was really the extent of that, of that, of that. You know, of that, of that action was that, was that the council would explore it. And, you know, I, and the, the Rec and Arts Committee to discuss this too, Councilwoman Karen Rivera and Kim Cho Han. And I discussed this and it's, I think we discussed, we discussed this issue. I don't know if we discussed what I'm about to say. The, the skate park, you know, the, the thing with the skate park is that, especially in that neighborhood, I, I'm not, I'm not sure that that park is really could sustain a skate park, particularly because skate parks, you know, and if, and if you, if you follow skate parks, they really are regional destinations. People in Highland Park go to New Brunswick, go to New Brunswick to go to the, to go to the skate park every day. We use the skate park in Roosevelt Park in Edison. And I do worry that if there were a skate park there, let alone parking, but it would just, it would, it would draw people from, from, from all outside of Highland Park to, to a way that could become unmanageable for a park that size. This is a use that is, basketball hoops are, have a precedent. It's, it's, it was a use. It's, and there still is the, you know, and there's still the space for it. And I think Tara was right that, you know, it really will benefit the neighborhood and folks who want to play there. And I think Council President Phil George is spot on is that there's not going to be lights there. So it's not going to, you know, there won't be that, that, that level of interference. And then just one, one, one more thing about the skate park. I think a skate park is really important. And that is something that we could explore in in places like Donaldson Park. A splash pad was, 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 was difficult there because of the infrastructure that goes underneath and because it's in a floodplain. But skate parks are just concrete. And, and I think we did some looking at our end to know that, you know, a skate park could actually go in one of our larger parks that, that can handle that level of regional attraction.
Matt, I also want to add just one thing, and that is the people who, who grew up in that area and were using the basketball court at Carcy. I don't know, what was it, 20 years ago or something? You know, they, they, they were used all the time. And it brought the neighborhood kids together in a safe place. The kids that are in the area now have heard about the basketball hoops there. And they also, you know, if we're going to do things for people who live in that particular part of town, what we're hearing from the kids is that they want basketball hoops. So, so I think it's a good thing for us to keep looking at the basketball hoops. I think it will be more widely used by neighborhood, by the neighborhood. I have the same concerns Councilman Hirsch has about a lot of traffic coming in once people hear we have a skate park someplace. And I also am a bit concerned about the amount of space that would really be needed for a skate park of any that anyone would be interested in, in that particular location. So I'd like us to continue to pursue the basketball hoops. And I know you've been talking with Terry about that and your recreation committee, correct, Matt?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to segue right into the recreation complex, track and turf field improvements?
Sure. Well, here's another area of improvement. The, the, anybody who knows is that the, the track and field, a real jewel in the community is, is, is falling into disrepair and really needs major improvements. We have a, just anecdotally, We have a, um, uh, and just anecdotally, because it's not a personal thing, I promise, uh, but my son who runs track is, uh, you know, their, their, their meets, for example, uh, they won't host meets at the, at our track because of, because of the state of its condition, um, and that's not good for Highland Park. Um, but the, uh, and believe me, I don't mind traveling around to other parts of the county to look at, to, to look at the other parks and kind of, you know, take notes on what they did. Uh, but, um, uh, but, you know, we have, it's a complicated arrangement that we have with the, um, uh, with the school district for, 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 for that, uh, for that facility. Uh, the borough actually owns the land and it's leased to the district, and I thought, is it the other way around, Terry? The district goes around, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, 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 I always say it wrong too. But recent, but we did have some, I, I did just want to update the council because I know that Terry had, had, had been in contact with, with, with the, um, business administrator at the district on kind of, you know, taking on, 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 on some next steps, and Terry, I, I just thought briefly, maybe you could just kind of summarize.
Truth is, I, I, I had intended to follow up with her more immediate to this meeting, and I wasn't able to do so. We have had communications, the general understanding was that the school and the borough, and this goes back to those original easements and the, the, the original improvement, you know, the turf and all that, uh, that we share evenly the expense related to maintenance and operations. We had applied for funding, we were not awarded the funding that we had kind of been in limbo about for all, over six to eight months, uh, waiting, because we really felt like we had a good shot at it. We, we now are in the process of regrouping and, um, I would agree, I think, and the schools I can represent, and I know Mayor, you've been in those meetings too, they're very concerned about those conditions, so I think we need to, uh, get back together. Uh, you know, as our CFO would say, get our pencils, sharpen our pencils and figure out what we can afford and how, and execute this project. Um, and I just gotta look back with them on timing considerations, because we try to, we, we have to time the project to be at least disruptive to some of the school operations as we possibly can do. Um, but also be mindful, it's growing harder and harder to use them anyway. And I would point out, Mary, I would say this is also important on so many levels, but in addition with our fields being flooded due to the floodplain issues increasingly, uh, which is a challenge for us, you know, we, this, this rec area is extremely important and will likely grow in importance, you know, and in the future. Um, so, and we're still worrying about that bigger picture question.
And to that point, um, I have, I have been working with the legislators and Frank Malone's office to try to get some funding, um, for the, uh, rec complex at the high school.
But it was, it was in our capital budget, you know, we know it, it was already kind of, but it is, we got it. It, it's go time now, we have to get something done over there.
So that's on deck for the, uh, for, for the Arts and Rec Committee, but I did just want to make sure, you know, I don't, I, I, I don't want to work in silos on this, and I would love to, I just want to make sure that all of council is, is, is aware and uh, several of you have more knowledge of, of, of the history here than I do, so any, and any input would be, would be greatly appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Um, okay, Tara, you want to talk to us about Better Care for All?
Um, we talked about it last work session a few weeks ago, but we didn't put it up for vote because a new version had come out where more people have signed to it. I know that some of our members were, had some problems with wording and things like that. But I'd like to point out again, I am one of the people who do not have insurance because I cannot afford what my job wants us to pay for insurance, and I was just hospitalized again this weekend, and now I have to worry about where I'm going to come up with the money to pay that hospital bill off. If I had Medicaid for All, I wouldn't be in that situation, so I just want to let you know, Medicaid for All helps everybody. The working for everybody, so I hope you all next week will join me in voting yes for Medicaid for All. That's it.
Thank you, Tara.
July 6th, right?
July 6th.
Um, I just, can I give a shout out to Anna Martovitsky, who's, 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 who's in, in attendance right now, she's an organizer, she's, um, uh, with our revolution. Uh, and, uh, this has been very important, uh, and very important effort, uh, for our, for our revolution as well as several residents who have been very active, so I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, uh, in-person meetings, Terry, you want to bring everybody up to speed?
Sure, um, as, I, I don't think there's been a single one of you who I haven't spoken to in the last couple of weeks where this conversation didn't come up. Um, and I'll say, I'm on a, a listserv for municipal managers in the state of New Jersey, and this is like, everybody, everybody's figuring this question out. So the question that the mayor and I were discussing, and then we also discussed as part of the admin committee, was when is it time to return to in-person council meetings? And I'm kind of limiting the discussion about council meetings and, well, you know, for, for the purpose of this work session now. Um, and after discussing it and trying to kind of weigh in different factors, one of the factors being, you know, we haven't yet, we're, we're closing in, but we're not at that 70% mark yet in the state. And also acknowledging the fact that while, while we, while we don't have temp, a actual restriction, we are able to establish our own policy on this and make that clear, I've cleared that with our attorney. Um, um, and what we're considering doing or recommending is that we, or we are doing, I guess, as the mayor would say, is to um, basically reestablish in-person, in council chambers, council meetings, uh, starting at the first meeting in, uh, September. Um, and I, I guess I got away from my original rationale that I was kind of laying, laying out, um, was also, so while we have, I have, on both sides, people really, really chomping at the bit to get back, there's also quite a few people who are still kind of getting used to the new normal and, and not requiring of social distancing and other things. So we thought it would be advisable since we only have two meetings, uh, this summer, because we're on our summer schedule, so we have the July 6th and the August, I want to say 3rd, Joan, correct me if I'm wrong, um, meetings, that we would just begin a fresh kind of like new school year, new, uh, uh, kind of go back to normal in September. Um, and that gives everybody a chance to adjust and think about that, but as now, we're not envisioning uh, social distancing and mask requirements, um, because that's not the guidance that I've been getting. Uh, and, um, our expectation is we'll see numbers continue to improve, vaccination rates to improve by that time. Of course, should our health, such a public health situation take a, a turn that none of us want to see happen, we will revisit that decision, but it seemed to have been kind of one of those things that everybody was um, really wanting to have something to work towards, and so we thought that was a good compromised position. So I don't know, Mayor, if you have anything else you suggest I add to that.
Elsie?
Uh, Terry, um, somebody said tonight that, um, they were asking, would we still have the Zoom opportunity for them to call in on? Would that still happen in September?
So.
Hope it all goes well.
We haven't made a decision on that yet.
Right.
Phil?
Uh, yeah, that was part of my question, because we need in the same room that the court uses, and they've been wired for television. I don't know how advisable it is, but it might be an, it, it, it might be some kind of an option that it,
Yeah.
Uh, it is electronically connected, uh, when we think about how we want to do that.
Right. We'll be discussing it, so, um, it just, there's a lot of moving parts on all of this, so. Okay.
Um, I think there's a couple hands.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hands, I should say.
I, oh, okay. Well, Matt, that hand, Matt Hirsch, your hand is sort of blending into.
No, it's him and, uh, Stephanie.
And Matt Hale, okay, oh, and Stephanie too? Okay, all right, so let's go, Matt Hirsch, Matt Hale and Stephanie.
I defer to the two who had their hands up before me. Maybe Stephanie?
And then I'll go first, um, what I was gonna say, sorry, um, about the in-person meeting, so we're, I think, I think we need to discuss that again as we get closer. Um, because we don't know if we're gonna, going to allow Zoom function, we're gonna be taking comments.
As I said, Stephanie, we have a lot more to discuss, and the only thing that Terry was saying was we're shooting for September.
Yeah, and also there was just a fully vaccinated cruise where someone.
Yes.
So, where we're allowing people, like, we, we don't know yet, right? So we're going, September goes into fall season, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know, like.
Yeah, you know, we, the reason we were looking at possibly September is we had established a goal of 70% of the population vaccinated, and we're at.
It was 64 or 60, something like that.
Uh, I can't forget it now, I just said it a few minutes ago, but.
59, Mayor, excuse me.
59 plus 12.
Right. Right. So we're getting closer.
It's so many moving parts that I think going into the fall that has been discussed about boosting shots and God knows whatever else we're going to need. So I don't, I don't know, I don't know, I think, yeah, we can just still keep that, I guess, as tentative, TV.
Well, I guess, I, I, I guess what I would suggest, and Mayor, you correct me if I'm wrong, I think, you know, there's, there's also, there's, there's pressures in the other direction, everything's opening up, and, and frankly, we don't know, you know, this technology was allowed in this health emergency, we don't know if the state's going to come up with an additional guidance. So there's a lot of variables in addition to kind of trepidation regarding public health. Um, and so we're gonna have to, to figure that out, yeah.
And I think to the other, um, we had a public comment about not being able to see other members of the public. I think, I think, I don't know, because I know at the redevelopment meeting one night, um, there was the, that option, I guess, was left on, and there were people chatting back and forth, there were people chatting with us, I, I, I.
Can I clarify? Can I clarify? So we use the webinar version of Zoom, which does not allow you, and if you've ever done a webinar for your job or something, you don't know who's, it's like you're at a seminar and it could be a million people, it could be five. You can't see, at least that's the way the Zoom platform works, I'm not saying there aren't others out there. Um, and then what had happened was the chat feature and the one meeting you're thinking of wasn't able, and it did create a, a tizzy. People couldn't see who was there, but they could see who chatted. So that, then everybody just started chatting and it was very distracting, and we put a, to that. So just to clarify, it wasn't like a setting that I can enable or disable with regard to viewing the attendees in a meeting, like right now, there are five people, and I, I don't have a switch I can toggle. Now, our meetings, this is a webinar, meetings, as somebody else indicated, are different and not, you can see everybody, and, but if we, we, we run into Zoom bombing problems, if we start to enable cameras, we start to run into problems, you know, that, that was kind of why we, we opted, and many, many communities opted for the webinar platform, so just let me clarify that, because I, I, I understand that, that frustration, because I've heard that my, from others. That's why I started at least calling out that there's 24, or there's, so that people had a sense for the attendance magnitude.
Yeah, I just looked at that comment, that's it.
Matt Hale?
Um, yeah, I, you know, there's a ton of things for you to figure out, for Terry to figure out, the admin committee, the mayor and all of that, and I, I, I trust that you will figure them out as, as best you can, I just wanted to add a, a general direction or general preference, and I really do think that there is a value in some streaming capacity for people to watch when we do go back, and, and how that happens technically, there's again, a lot more questions, but I, 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 I would, I would like us to look at trying to have the, the streaming capacity, um, uh, and, and, and take the benefits that, that of, of people being able to, you know, watch us in their pajamas, um, uh, you know, when we go back and, and, um, we have to put on pants, so just in, 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 in sort of a, a, a big picture idea, as you're going through all of these difficult decisions, as you're going through that way, um, you know, I, I think we can and, and should seriously explore the capacity for, for streaming and, and having live, having people come, having, you know, all of those types of things, but also having some sort of streaming capacity, I think that's something we, we ought to work towards.
Excuse me, Mayor, I just wanted to let you know, I, I got a text from the borough clerk, her internet failed, so how timely was that for this conversation? Um, uh, but just so you know, I, I don't think, I think Ed can guide us if we run into any, uh, procedural questions, but she'll try to join back, but.
Are we okay to continue, Ed?
Are you being recorded?
Yes, we are, so.
Yes.
I shall have the ability to refer back to the.
Thank you very much, okay, um, yeah, so I kind of felt like you, Matt Hale, and you, Matt Hirsch, were going to have that perspective. So let me see what you're coming up with, Matt Hirsch.
I totally disagree with Matt Hale. That's for you, Mike, that's for you, Mike Schaffler, if you're watching.
Like wearing pants.
Yeah, I am wearing pants, um, no, the, um, uh, no, I, 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 I wanted to kind of go back, just, just, you know, it, it's, it's funny, because if we go back in time to like 2009, when the public information, when the Public Information Committee was first launched, when, Gail, you were the liaison, Tara, we were working on the Public Information Committee. This is something we would totally do if we had the technology, you know, with Zoom, we would completely encourage uh, people to participate at home and be able to, you know, interact with meetings for, and especially now for those who might be uncomfortable uh, attending public meetings, so, um, and I know that that's where all of us want to be, so, so I, it's, I, I know it's really just preaching to the choir, but for the benefit of the folks who, who, who raised it before, um, uh, you know, because it's, so, you know, first it was, you know, Facebook and Twitter and Instagram, and then, and then it was the newsletter, and now we, we're, we're kind of, we've, 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 we've graduated into this new, new realm, uh, of, uh, you know, of, of, of meetings, and you can't really unring that bell, um, but I did want to just mention though, that, you know, when it comes to in-person meetings, I, I am, uh, I'm really excited to come back in, 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 in person. Um, you know, we are vaccinated, we have to do our due diligence, we, we, uh, you know, we have to have, uh, you know, safety protocols in place, but I do think that, um, conducting council business in person is, is, is the best way to do it, and if we can have.
And also with public in person.
And it's, right, it's public, and to have people participate at home if they choose to is, 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 is really important. But just, you know, in, and you know, and, and look, we're, we're, this isn't, we can't, we have to, we can't forget that the schools are going to be in person in the fall, um, and they're going to have safety protocols in place, so they'll probably still wear masks. Uh, so those are the things that we can consider, you know, for, for, for in-person meetings.
Yeah, and what, you know, whatever, uh, uh, the admin committee works on with Terry and me, um, the, I want to get the COVID task force also involved, because that was a really, really great group of people. We're now, by the way, down to meeting once a month, um, as opposed to every Monday morning. Um, but it was a group of people from different parts of municipality, uh, Board of Health, um, Elsie was on from Public Safety, uh, we had fire, first aid, um, it, it's library, it was a very, very good group, and I really value their input. Terry, did you want to, you had your hand out?
I did, I guess I wanted to also, I, believe you me, I saw this tea leaves, I think I've been talking to the mayor, I'm like, if you even think we're gonna maintain, do that, I need like a lot of notice, because it's not just a, do we want to allow at home, I just want to, there's some technological challenges, because once we're in person, it's one thing if we're all on Zoom, easy. When we're in person, there's going to be some technology challenges, not that they're not surmountable, but it's going to be less optimal. Um, so there's going to be some trade-offs that we have to think about as well, and I've been thinking about it, and I just want to be clear, Emma and I have been believing me, exploring this, talking to other towns, you name it, but there, there's a lot of considerations, and just because Zoom has made it so easy to try to do in-person in our council chambers while remote, and, and putting aside, frankly, it's, it's not an easy way to run a meeting. So, you know, there's a lot of things to weigh, and, and I can, you know, that's, that's what we've been talking about, but.
That's why it's going to take a while.
It's going to take a while, but we need to, because I was getting a little, I'm going to need to set up bench, like a line, and and then if we have to push it, we will, because of whatever good reason, but, you know, I think it's a good way to, you know, we have two months, we can really work toward that.
Okay, I'm going to move on now to cannabis next steps with Ed. Um, Ed, before you get started, I do want to let the council know, I have been talking to the Board of Ed um, about what they're going to be doing in terms of cannabis and edu- um, about what they're going to be doing in terms of cannabis and education for um, the students, the teenagers in town and um, the schools, I'm just gonna quote to you from what they said, the schools are, are running an education program to make teens aware of the possible dangers of underage marijuana use. It will be similar to the successful underage drinking program that has been in effect at the high school for decades. Um, so there's like two parallel programs, you know, us and what we're going to do from the municipal perspective in terms of marijuana businesses here uh, and the schools and education for tweens and teens.
Excuse me, I just wanted to let you know, the, the borough clerk, while I'm having trouble promoting her to a panelist, she, she texted me, she's listening as a participant, so she'll be taking notes. So just.
Thank you. Okay, Ed, you're on.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Following the, um, last governing body meeting, um, our office has begun and finished reading the two hundred and forty-four pages of the legislation that was adopted in February, which would permit municipalities to allow for recreational marijuana in their community. And as a result of doing that, we prepared pretty much of an outline of how the ordnancy, and that's what we would have to do, is you would have to adopt an ordinance, how the ordnancy would work. In the first instance, there would be a land use component of the ordinance, which would make as permitted uses in the specific zones the class of activity that you want to permit in the borough. And that land use ordinance would then have to be referred to the, uh, planning board uh, for their review, comment and recommendation. There's also another component which involves licensing the entities who may want to come into the borough and participate in the program under one or more of the classes of activity that are permitted under the law. And that licensing would be very similar to the way you license and regulate alcoholic beverages in town. So we would have to come up with a number of, uh, if you were going to deal with the retail, a number of retail licenses that you would like to authorize. You have to come up with a methodology about if you do make available one, two, five or ten licenses. And you have twenty individuals who might be interested in those, how you would run a lottery to pick the right ones. Um, and also hours of operation. There was something mentioned earlier during the public session about do you or don't you allow on-premise consumption uh, in the quote-unquote pollers or don't you? Uh, we also would have to discuss whether or not you wanted to adhere to any of the regulations in terms of having uh, any of these retail operations, for example, be so many feet away from a school or a house of worship. Uh, the ordinance, I'm sorry, the legislation is not as mechanical as, as the, the drug legislation uh, whi- which establishes drug zones. You don't have to be a thousand feet away from a school in order to authorize a cannabis operation in the town. We would have to go through that element of the ordinance, which would be the licensing portion of the ordinance. Finally, there is a third section which deals basically with the user fees or the tax that the municipality can collect from the conduct that you might allow in the community. And as you may recall, and I know the mayor worked hard on this for the League of Municipalities, but the municipal level of, of the user fee cannot exceed two percent of the, uh, actual sales, if there was to be retail sales, there were to be retail sales in the community. So the, the different elements of the ordinance would have to be put together. I've been in touch with the admin committee and the Economic Development Committee. Uh, we have received some direction from them in terms of how to move forward. And my recommendation would be that we continue to gather that information and any other information which the, uh, council may wish to gather from the community so that we could build an ordinance and then have something for you to review, debate, and then hopefully introduce. But that's kind of the status of where we are right now in terms of the, um, uh, the cannabis, uh, ordinance. Uh, I'll remind you that if you do want to authorize any of the classes of activity as authorized by the state law, uh, we would have to have on the books a, an ordinance adopted on or before August twenty-second. Uh, we do have time to do that, uh, for you to consider, uh, debate and introduce an ordinance, to have the planning board review that ordinance and have it come back to you. And then to have you perhaps have a special meeting a little bit later in August for this purpose only in order to adopt the, uh, uh, ordinance if you choose to do so. But that is, that's a firm deadline, uh, August twenty-one, twenty-two is a weekend. I believe twenty-two is the right date. Uh, we, we would have to have that ordinance adopted and then, uh, and, and then sent and, and put in place so that we could, um, then implement the, uh, decision you would make about allowing the recreational marijuana in, in the borough. That's my report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ed? Okay. So, um, Terry.
Mayor, I guess I, so, um, Ed, the, the process that you're going through right now is based on the direction that the council gave earlier about the, the economic development, the, the public safety, that, that you have that direction about the crafting of those various components. Is that, is that?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So you're in that process right now of crafting those various components?
Yes.
Do you have?
I will need.
A lot of work. I just, the question is, when, when does that? Might that come forward?
Yeah.
What, like, how, how much time, like, where are we in that process?
Well, we, we, we believe that we would have the process completed. I do need a little bit more input from the Economic Development Committee and Admin. For example, if we're gonna license X number of retail establishments in town and we're gonna issue a permit to them, just like permits are issued for alcoholic beverage licenses, what do you want to charge per license for an applicant? And, and we have taken a look at a number of ordinances which are being drafted throughout the state. And there's a pretty good range on what municipalities are planning to charge. I will come to you as we get to that point of a licensing ordinance and we have a blank in there. I'm gonna come to you and ask you for what your recommendation is to put in that element of the ordinance so we can complete it. But the, the outline and the overview, which Economic Development and Admin has provided to me, is precisely what we're following in order to come up with the ordinance. And we would intend to have an ordinance available for your inspection and, and deliberation at your meeting on July sixth.
So Ed, in the ordinances that you've been reviewing, are any of them from Edison or Matutchen?
Uh, no.
And, and New Brunswick, I know they've passed some, uh, zoning.
They've done some land use work, that's correct.
Right, but you haven't seen what they're charging yet.
Well, uh, no, we, we have their ordinance, but we don't, we, we'll have to see what was their charge. We, we're putting together, I guess, these open issues so that you can make a call, finding out what the, what, what people in the neighborhood are doing and what other boroughs your size are doing throughout the state.
Yeah, we have to keep in mind that we have to be competitive with the municipalities that surround us.
Any from?
We'll give you, we'll give you information to assist you in making the decision, but I'll have to come to Economic Development or Admin and to say, Matutchen, this is what we learned from them, the Scataway, it is whoever's working on it. And also share with you some of the other analogous sized municipalities, other boroughs about what they are charging in the greater area where you are and beyond. And then we'll ask you for some direction.
Okay, good.
So as part of that deliberation process, I, I, I think we had also discussed having a, uh, a, a, a meeting of some, a public meeting of some sort to, to, to hear from the public. And Terry, can you remind me of, of the date? That we.
We were looking at the calendar and it seemed like Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, worked at seven o'clock, you know, our usual time, uh, to have such a meeting. And we discussed it wasn't going to be necessarily a a full blown council meeting, although of course council members will be invited to attend, but it would be more of a forum where we could present basically what Ed, Ed's gonna be working with those various committees on to get, you know, to basically say, here's, here's kind of the latest thinking prior to moving forward with introduction uh, at the July sixth meeting. So if all falls into line as thought it would. So, yes, so we'll certainly get information unless that direction is changed. Uh, the idea would be to get the word out, uh, soon regarding the, the June twenty-ninth meeting. Seven PM again, it'll be a Zoom meeting, uh, forum, uh, where, where we could present and then hear from the public.
And, and Ed, just so I'm clear, is, is that a the reasonable, will we, will the council have had something ahead of the twenty-ninth? That we can, you know, the Economic Development Committee will, you know, and all of that. I just want to make sure that we're, we're, you know, working off of a document by the, you know, before the twenty-ninth. Is that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, great. I think that makes sense then.
Hey, anybody else have a question for Ed? No, no little hands in the upper left-hand corner?
There's nothing more here. I did, I did just have a, I wanted to just update something I said earlier in the meeting, just to clarify, but I, but, but it's not part of this.
Okay, so if there are no more questions for Ed, we can go on to your comment, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. Just really quickly, I mentioned that the, um, uh, that the CR, the Civilian Review Board, uh, Bill had not had a committee hearing yet and, and on the, and on the Senate side it has not, but, um, tomorrow, actually, it looks like that it will, uh, be heard in the Assembly Appropriations Committee, which is, which is, uh, exciting because it's usually the last step before a full vote uh, in the legislature. So, um, I guess we'll just stay tuned. But I just wanted to clarify that it has had a hearing in the Assembly um, uh, and was approved by, um, uh, the Assembly Community Development Affairs Committee back in March.
So Councilwoman, um, Foster, can you, um, make sure that, uh, Assemblywoman McKnight knows we passed that tonight so she can add that to her presentation tomorrow? If necessary.
I will follow up with her tonight.
Thank you very much. Okay, then if no one has any other comments.
Stephanie has her hand up.
Stephanie?
Yeah, I have my hand up. I, I do have a question and the public comment, there was someone that said we're not, we're, um, basically breaking the federal law. Is that like true? Do I need to like lawyer up or? Outside of Ed or I don't know.
Well, in addition to defending you, I can also post bail for you. So you, we'll get you home. Um, I heard that argument before. In fact, uh, Mary had called me with that argument before. And we'll respond to that. I mean, the answer is, the answer is no, you're not doing anything illegal. I mean, if you think about it, when you swore to uphold the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and the Constitution of the United States. If you look at the state of New Jersey, we had a constitutional amendment which allowed the legislation to be adopted in February in order to authorize recreational marijuana. So clearly you're not out of step with the New Jersey Constitution. And literally speaking, if you look at your oath of office where you swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States, there's nothing in the Constitution of the United States which prohibits recreational marijuana. Uh, so I don't think, you're, you're, it's not like you're a renegade running off trying to do something that hasn't been authorized by the state legislature. It has been. And a number of other states have done the same thing. And the federal government has not come down on those states to try to enforce any of the statutes, the constitution, but they're statutes. So I don't believe that adopting a regulation that was authorized by the voters of this state and memorialized in a constitutional change in legislation is gonna get you in any legal trouble. I'll still post your bail if you get arrested.
Thank you, Ed. Matt?
Uh, I, I just, I've, thank you, Stephanie, for, for asking that because it is, it, it, it really is, you know, they, they said the same thing about sanctuary cities, you know, that we're breaking, that, that, that we're somehow breaking the law. And it's just not true. You know, I think that there are, I might disagree. I think several of us would disagree, but I think that there are important discussions to be had, you know, particularly from residents who have concerns. But, you know, if we're worried about breaking the law, well, this is the law that found that black residents were arrested for marijuana possession at three and a half times higher than their white counterparts, despite similar rates of usage. So if that is, if, if that's the law that we're breaking, you know, we really, we really need to re, reconfigure our mindset around that. And of course, it's not against the law. That's all. Sorry.
Okay, any other questions? All right then, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you all. Good night.
Good night.